Thank you very much for joining us this morning for our City Council Budget Session. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the role?
Gray.
Here.
Sheen.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Ortega.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Black.
Here. Thank you.
I gotta leave at about 4:00.
4:00 to 12:00. Maybe we'll get her done by then.
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and get started. We'll jump to number two is our Street Operations Department, Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director, will be present to give a presentation.
Yes.
It's early in the morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. We're going to be presenting four budgets today, so I brought some backup to help me try and stay organized. I've got Kerry Farnsworth, our Administrative Manager, and Theresa Clodell, our Sleep Manager. So first off, we're going to start with the Street Department. In the Street Department, we're also going to talk about our Fund 70, which is our federal aid project. So we'll be discussing that as we go along as well. So first off, you can see our organizational chart. It's pretty much the standard that we've had, same from last year. The next thing is you can see that we've got some of the variances in our budget. When we submitted these slides, we didn't have actual employee numbers. You've heard that from most of the departments. So that first line, you can kind of avoid that or ignore that. We did do a little small increase to our operations and capital lines. Our capital lines in the Street Department is a lot of our operations, so that's where our asphalt and all that comes out of. And it's such as a high quantity that it gets capitalized. So we combined those operations and capitals, and we pulled out, it's a little over 3% is our variance this year for our budget. And the majority of that's going towards energy costs. I don't know if we've seen the recent idle power stuff, but for our large general service, our street lights are going up 11 and 1/2% this year. So it's a pretty big jump in power costs. We spend about $430,000 a year on power already for our street lights, so 11% is a pretty big jump. And then you can see our full-time equivalents. That's pretty much.
Oh, hey.
When you talk about electrical costs going up, it's hard to relate that to other energy sources when it's hydro power. Is it based, do you think the drought situation might be triggering that?
I'm not sure why such a big jump this year. We're seeing in residential, it's up 8.6. Small general services, which are like kind of our parking lot lights, you know, on city-owned lights, is up 7.23. And our larger general services are up 11.36.
And this has already passed the Utility Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
So I really don't know what's driving that so much, but it's a huge increase.
That's huge for being one of the lowest costs because we're not on energy.
Yeah. It was quite the sticker shock to us, too. So our next slide, you can see our, what I just talked about, our budget variances. It's a little over 3%. It's $116,000 is what we're looking at for, basically, we increased what we kind of have to do. You know, we can always pave one less road, or we can do this, but we've got to keep the lights on. And then we split that out with some of the traffic, paint, as well as signs. Those have gone up quite considerable. So that's about all for that. We'll talk a little bit about our federal aid program. We fund this through the Street Department. We are putting in $250,000 a year from the Street Department into this fund. And what we do with that is we kind of create a savings account. And then, as we have the ebbs and flows of projects throughout the year, that gives us the opportunity to pull those money so that when the funding becomes available from the feds, we're able to act on that. And so, just to put a little perspective, a $250,000 contribution equates to about $3.5 million leveraged money. So when I first took over the Street Department, we were about $70,000. So I think we're really doing a great job of trying to go after these federal projects and get them for a cheaper rate.
Now, is this flow-through because we've retired the connector costs? And so this is like we've taken the connector, what debt we were servicing, we put it into something like this?
Absolutely. Yeah. So we reinvested that back into federal aid projects.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. So we've listed here just some of the projects that are going ahead. I know there's been questions about, you know, what projects we've got. So this year, we're looking at Main to North. We're going to do some curb expansion, bold bouts down through Old Town to try and calm traffic. We're starting the Carson Street Bridge this fall, which is going to be a great project. And then we're doing a safety project on Flandreau. We'll be putting an island down in front of Quinn. We have a high accident rate right there because Quinn and Yellowstone and Flandreau is such a tight intersection right there. So we have a high-traffic accident incidence there. So we're going to try and get that remedied.
Will that get rid of those yellow?
Yep.
And I imagine those things are heck to plow around with.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't matter if you miss it with the plow, the snow can hit them.
Yeah. We can wipe them out like toothpicks. They don't stand a chance. So.
Speaking of those, is that, and I know it's not you guys, but are those going to be permanent on Yellowstone?
Fortunately, yes. Yeah, we pushed ITD very sternly on that, that we did not like that. We wanted a dedicated median down there. There was talk of doing a signal upgrade at Yellowstone and Alameda down the road. Unfortunately, the islands at this point haven't made it into that project. So we're stuck with the yellows for a while.
But there is a traffic, a signalization project coming up here in about a month.
Correct.
What's that going to be?
On the ITDs?
I don't know. They've got the signs out.
On Yellowstone? Yellowstone and Alameda?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're doing some signal timing adjustments right now. I'd have, I'm not sure. I'd have to check on that for you. But what we've done on the corridor is we've extended our yellow times. And so in between a light when you're coming at it, and it's green, and then it turns yellow to red, that clearance time is what we call it, the yellows. We've extended some of those clearance times to try and alleviate some accidents.
And they should speed up and make the light, right?
Yeah, exactly. Now you don't have to speed up as much to make it.
Or you can be right there and not get through before it turns.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's a, flowing traffic is like trying to trace water. It does whatever it wants. So the more, we just kind of like it's herds and sheep, so we try the best we can. But I'll follow up on that and see if there's a project that I'm not aware of. The other thing I would like to bring up about Fund 70 is earlier this year, Engineering put in a grant application for the Center Street pedestrian bridge that goes, the pedestrian bridge that goes over Center. When that was brought up, it was asked if that was going to require a match and if we had that money. Currently, our, the amount of money that we have set aside for our projects funds us till 2025 right now. So we got it, we're going to be building up more money as we go. And currently, we don't have the money, the $32,000 of the match for that. However, when that bridge is constructed, we'll probably, we'll want to do that when the Center Street is going as well. And so that grant, if it's awarded, which we feel it's going to be, then that money won't need be available till 2025. But we had talked about that, and so we just, I wanted to bring it up with you guys to make sure that you were comfortable in going ahead and going after that. I think by 2025, we'll have that money as we build up, that we won't need to do a tax ask, but that's my hope. So that's just something that, for you guys to think about. All right, here comes the fun part. Sorry, I hope I didn't sticker shock everybody. So over the last probably three or four years, our state highway user fees and our Bannock County Road and Bridge money has come in way over expectations. Last year alone, we over-executed on revenues by $875,000. So basically, what is going on is we're having a lot of money, but we haven't had the authority to spend it because we've been keeping our budgets as flat as we can. So what's that, what that has led to is our excess reserves in the Street Department is a little over $4 million right now. And so what we're asking this year is for a big increase in our payment management budget, which would allow us to spend that excess revenue that we're getting every year. So this comes without any tax ask. Right now, we've, with the money that we've received last year, if we just receive that same amount of money, we'll have enough to cover this $500,000 increase in paving. And some of the early reportings we're seeing is highway user money is going to go up considerably this year. So what we're asking is an additional $500,000 to be put into our paving budget. I started working at the city in 2001, and we had a $1 million pavement budget. And in 2021, '22, we have a $1 million paving budget. So I think we've done a really good job in trying to maintain where we're at, but I think we're at a point where we need to start investing some of that money and improve our, improve our road network. Our last pavement survey we did, it shows that our road, our asphalt value is $260 million. So it's a pretty, it's probably one of the city's largest assets that we own.
So we got Josh, and then Roger.
The highway user fees and the Bannock County Road and Bridge Funds, how consistent are those? I mean, you said you anticipate them going up year to year. If you were to show me past five, 10 years, what does that trend look like? Is it up-down? Is it pretty consistent?
So, yes, we do have that information, and I can share that with you if you'd like. What we're seeing is that, like for 2021, we estimated $600,000 in our revenue. That's what we projected. And we executed $800,000. And we've gotten $800,000 since 2017. So we're pretty, we're pretty good at that one. So we're banking about $200,000 a year out of that. And then highway user fees has, just to give you an idea, in 2016, we had $2.5 million, and in 2021, we're at almost 2.8. So it's just been a nice, steady growth. And I guess the good thing about this is we haven't ever went backwards. And so we have that nice growth, but we're actually spending here. So we're not actually catching what we're getting, we're just trying to get a little bit closer to it. Does that make sense? Yeah, it makes sense.
Roger.
So what do you expect fuel prices to do with regard to your asphalt and stuff?
So we've actually got our asphalt bid for the year. It went from $54 a ton to $63.90 a ton, 60. So it's, it went up pretty good, a pretty good amount.
$10 a ton.
And we usually do 4,000 to 5,000 tons a year in material. So currently, we do, we have built the budget flat with, except for the small increase that we took for the power costs and those. So we're currently at a level that we're, we're able to build our program around. But what we're seeing is, is, you know, five years ago, we were doing 40 miles a year, and now we're at 35, 30. And we're only getting about 30 miles a year right now with what we're doing. And so it's just been an ongoing problem that's just ticking at us.
So will the extra $500,000, will that take you back up a ways, you know, in turn, what will that do? How many miles will that?
Yeah, that will put us, I think we figured about 12 or 18, I think it was 18 miles is what we're hoping we can get out of that. So.
Up to 48?
Well, yeah, that's what we're hoping for. Yeah. That answered my question.
Linda?
Oh, and I just wanted to clarify, when you were, and I'm not, is it on here? You said that our paved roads are one of our biggest assets, and you gave a value, and I missed that number.
260 million.
260 million?
So every five years, we do a computer road survey of the network so that we can get a third person, you know, an objective party that determines if we're doing good or not. And part of that report that they present to us shows that the value of our road network, just the asphalt part, not the property, not the street, or the signals, all that, is 260 million. So.
Okay, I got Claudia, Chris, and then Claudia.
So I'm just verifying that I processed correctly. None of what is presented on this slide represents a tax ask. Okay. And then has the, has there been any noise at all about the legislature and all its wisdom changing anything about how road use revenue is shared? I mean, we know that they sometimes get these great ideas that don't help us.
Actually, they passed, I believe it was House Bill 312 last year, that actually supplements even more with some sales tax. So.
So there's no.
The lie I'm getting is actually they want to do more.
Right, versus relying on property taxes. And finally, from past conversations with Engineering, I was told that we used to have a curb and sidewalk fund as well in the distant past, perhaps. So I'm wondering, can street money be used for curb and sidewalk, or is it just for vehicular?
So we actually, as part of our paving program, the Department of Justice requires us that whenever we do a surface treatment, we have to update the ramps at the corners. The sidewalk curb and gutter thing gets touchy because, according to our ordinance, it actually belongs to the property.
Understood.
And I think I've talked about this before, but when I first took over, I was white-eyed, wishy-tailed, and I said, I want to start a sidewalk program.
So idealistic.
So idealistic. And then I met with, you know, we talked with legal, we've talked with some of the other cities, and it just turns into this.
Beam crusher.
It just snowballs into this. So that would be the only part that would be tricky is if we were to use street funds to replace a sidewalk, do we replace everyone's sidewalk? And then do we pick and choose who we do? And then the other big liability?
Could do a lottery.
Huh?
Could do a lottery.
I mean, it's totally possible. The other thing that has come out from other cities is that it's evolved into, then who does the snow removal? Does the city now do the snow removal on the sidewalks? So I think it's totally something that we should be looking into and researching, but there's a lot of unintended consequences.
Of course, of course. But given the fact that, you know, if we're talking about rejuvenating downtown, then we're talking about the neighborhood within which that resides, it's Old Town. And then we all know we're talking about sidewalks that, especially with current prices, when you probably have to remove a tree, number one, and then on top of that, you have to spend an astronomical amount. It's just beyond the capacity of many of the people who live, de facto, live in Old Town. And so I'd be very, very interested in seeing what we might be able to do. I've got to believe there's a way to write legal language that doesn't force the city to be now in charge of the sidewalk in perpetuity.
I'm a fixer. I would love to do it. I really would. I would love to just, I would love to do this. So if it's got, if it's got, you know, wings and we want to fly with it, I'd be happy to do whatever I can to make that happen.
Thank you.
Claudia, and then Roger.
Okay, so I'm not, you know me, I'm not real smart. I'm kind of Barney. So no offense to any Barneys.
I wish you would stop saying that.
No offense to any possible Barneys in the room.
She always chooses a male.
So if your asphalt cost is going up $10 per, I wrote gallon, but it's per ton, and you're using 400 to 500 tons.
Thousand.
Four to five?
Thousand.
Thousand tons. That's half a million dollars. So that half a million dollars is a net. I mean, there's no, how are you, how is it that you're telling me you're going to be able to do more roads when that, that increase is just going to eat the 500?
Right. So.
I mean, am I wrong?
No, no. I totally get your point. And I'm going to brag a little bit. So when I took over in 2014, we used to do 20 miles a road. We did, we, in the pavement world, we do what's called first is worst. So everybody knows where the bad roads are, right? Because the phone rings and tells you. Well, if you do all the bad roads every year, then your bad roads get a little good, but your good roads get bad really fast. So when I took over, I brought in a new philosophy of a certain amount of bad roads, a certain amount of medium roads, and a certain amount of.
Decent roads.
Decent roads. And so we fog seal for, we want to keep good roads good. We microseal to keep good, middle roads to try and push them up to good. And then we pave roads to bring those up. And we were able to go from 20 miles a year up to over 40. And so for this year, we've gotten, I believe it's 32 miles that we're doing with the $1 million. And so if we add half of that, that's 16 more miles, and that's going to put us up there. That's our hope. Because not all of it is going to be absorbed by paving costs. Some of those paving costs that come along with the 4,000 tons is when we do water department projects. So when the water department digs up a road, we come in behind and we pave the road. Well, the water department pays for a portion of that.
Okay.
So not all of that money is going to go towards asphalt. It's going to go a little bit to the fog seal, a little bit to the microseal, a little bit to the paving. Does that make sense?
Yeah. No, it does. I was just kind of looking at numbers going.
Right.
That's a net zero. And I just don't see how we're going to do more roads with net-zero money.
Yeah. In all actuality, I'd love to sit here and ask for a million. I really would. Are the studies?
Well, you can.
Okay.
I mean, you know, you can ask.
Okay. Our, this survey that we've done, they put a, our program of 3 to 5 million a year for a network our size, just to give you a ballpark. So we do it for roughly about $2 million, $1 million in materials, and, you know, $1 million in labor and equipment and fuel and all that other stuff. So I think we pack a very good bang for the buck. And one thing that we have going for us is, is every year, most agency, they, in this report, they compare us to other agencies our size throughout the country. And most people with a budget level of ours is keeping flat, or they're diverging away from where they should be. They're going down. And we've been able to increase, you know, from a half of PCI, Payment Condition Index, point to a 2-point in these last five to six years that we've been doing this. So it, we've gotten very creative on how we do things. Roads that we used to pave, we now run a cold planter down and smooth it out and microseal it, and we're getting like, so we've been very creative on how we try and do things. But we're just getting to a point where we're getting limited return on that, diminishing returns on that money.
So one more follow-up question. So if the fuel prices have increased the cost of the material, have you factored in, and I'm sure you have, I'm just confirming, you factored in the increased fuel costs on actually doing it, right? Because those big trucks suck down a lot of diesel.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And some of the things that we've done to offset that, sorry, I'll hurry. I hate to hold you guys up. We've got a lot going.
You're fine.
We've bought in, over the years, we've bought trucks with trailers now that have a conveyor belt in the floor of it. And so what we've been able to do with those is we haul salt with them in the winter because it's difficult to get salt hauled in in the winter. But what it's also enabled us to do is you can haul three dump truck loads of asphalt in that trailer. And that trailer will back up to the paver, and it just conveyor belts it out. It doesn't tip up and hit power lines. And that's been able to cut down on the amount of trucks that we need to pave a job considerably. So there's ways that we're trying to combat that on the backside.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
I've got Roger, then Chris.
When it comes to sidewalks, I believe the city of Pocatello, that was part of the Fred Meyer Tiff District, that that whole area was under, that we went in and replaced sidewalks in that area. Then I think Chubbuck in the last few years, out in, they've done a lot of sidewalks and street improvements. And I don't, I don't know how they did it, but it wouldn't hurt to talk to them to find out how the legal permission was derived at.
Perfect. Like I said, if you guys want me to do it, I'll do it. I love this kind of stuff.
Chris, and then Rick.
So I just, from my understanding, so this two and a bit million that's represented on this slide is coming from money that you have been consciously stockpiling over a number of years? Is that, am I understanding, I mean, when you get through all the niceties with bottom line, that, that's basically the deal?
Yeah. So the street fund has its own reserves. And so a lot of this money has, we've tried to, you know, run as efficiently as we could. But it's also that we've kept our budgets pretty, pretty steady, but our revenues have increased.
Right, right.
So it's kind of a twofold thing of how we got to this point.
Right. And so if, with permission to expand this to odd mill, what does that leave bottom line in that fund?
About two, well, I think the.
Give or take.
Yeah, the $500,000, I believe, is going to, we're not even going to have to tap into reserves at all. So it would be basically the traffic signal, which is 750,000, the dump truck, the two dump trucks.
So it's a million and a half, whatever. So what roughly give or?
That would put us down to 3 million.
Okay. Which is, I mean, that gives you a good cushion for federal matches.
Exactly. And that's been one of our big things that you brought up. We've tried to keep money in there, so when things come up, we can try and act as much.
Thank you.
Rick?
Tom, the, as we're all aware, ITD has a big project planned for Pocatello. It's going to start July 11. And that's going to require closing the Venture Way-Chubbuck Road Overpass and diverting traffic to other places in our town. Do you anticipate that's going to cause traffic problems as far as road surfaces or, you know, increased wear, particularly Pocatello Creek?
Absolutely. Yeah, we do. We're watching that really close. I think North Gate Parkway and Olympus is going to take a pretty good beating. Thankfully, they're fairly new. From basically Butte to the Chubbuck City Limits is fairly new asphalt. And then Olympus has been on our, our pavement management as one of our higher-factor roads. We, we weight roads differently based on traffic volumes, whether it's an arterial or a collector. But we envision that it's going to be a huge traffic burden.
Are you going to need to retime lights, like at Pocatello Creek?
We may, yes. Yeah, we're looking into all of those particular options.
Need to now.
Well, we just, it's a fun story. We just actually did a signal timing adjustment on that Pocatello Creek corridor. And from Alameda to Olympus, we've documented a 45-second improvement. So, yeah. So we've coordinated that, that system through there. So just a pet peeve on my thing is, a lot of the biggest problems is, is cars go too slow in Pocatello. You see it a lot on Yellowstone. It's 35 mile-an-hour speed limit, people are going 20. And that really messes with your traffic timings. And it's hard to guess that. So.
I got behind one of those when I left here yesterday, 21 miles an hour down Yellowstone.
So.
Chris?
Yeah. Another sort of similar to the sidewalk question. So obviously, there's been a lot of talk about the corner of Jefferson, that lot. And it kind of went from a modest project to EV stations and all kinds of things, and the cost escalated. Are there ever any, is there any way to do a modest project on that corner that would be allowable with any of the funding that Streets gets?
So that actually, that parking lot technically belongs to Streets.
Right.
You would say, because Streets provided the funding, the match for that. Highway user dollars get kind of cloudy. You're only supposed to use it in the right-of-way. So we'd have to do a little bit more research on what actually Streets could do with that. We had talked about making it a stormwater capturing facility, and we were going to do that. But there's always options on a million ways to do things.
So is that, I mean, that, so I think I hear you saying that that's something that it's not out of the realm of reasonable, of reasonableness to consider?
Sure. I mean, anything's, yeah.
Because it might be another way to get a project that there's been some energy around on council done, at least, you know, modestly.
And I think the biggest thing with the corner is, I guess we, we as a group need to decide what it wants to be when it grows up.
Right.
You know, is it a park? Is it a parking lot? And so I think it could be worth some extra discussions on that.
Okay. Is that something you'd be willing to, maybe after budgeting is done, or at an appropriate time, see if we could get that on an agenda?
Yeah. I can talk with Jeff and the mayor, and we'll see what we can do.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Tom.
Was there anything else on the truck? Sorry. We're good to go. So we're going to go to sanitation now?
Yeah, in fact, we are. And out of the three is sanitation. Yes.
I think he's got, his name's on the next couple.
Yeah, they are. It is.
Sorry, you're stuck with me for the morning.
As long as it's not the afternoon, too, then I think I'll be okay.
I'll do my best. Okay, sanitation department. As you can see, this is our org chart. We've put in, Heather had talked about, our HR director talked about. We've put in, Heather had talked about, our HR director talked about, a couple of requests we had for new positions. So we basically put those in as red, just to, as a placeholder, so he could see what that looks like. On the next slide, sanitation, we, we developed a rate study in 2019 and implemented in 2020. Part of that rate study takes into account the ebbs and flows of operation. And so for this year, you can see we're doing an 8% increase. That doesn't mean we're taking an 8% increase to our fees. The fees are going up by 3%, which is dictated by the rate study. But we're overspending in some of our, to get out of our revenues, to cover some new trucks that, that we're doing. So in, in the rate study, one year it may show that one truck's due, and next year it's three trucks due, the next year it's only two. And so the rate study's built to try and stabilize that. So this year, we're just pulling money out of reserves.
Okay, Josh?
So this pay and benefits on the slide does not incorporate the two new asks for personnel. Is that correct?
Does not.
Okay. So are you anticipating then, in your sanitation department, FTEs, that to go to 42.5?
That is correct.
Okay.
Oh, it sounds like Chris.
So I noticed on one of the recent slides under Streets, you had garbage truck slash snowplow.
No, that was a dump truck.
Dump truck. Oh, oh, all right. Okay, all right. Never mind. Thank you.
You just plow before you do your run.
There's a lot of communities that plow with garbage trucks, but I don't know how they do it. So here's just a little service level information. I just wanted to present this because we are asking for, the rate study is, is recommending a senior operator, but we are also asking for a new position, which is a welder fabricator. We have seen pretty sizable growth in the sanitation department as far as usage. The biggest target that we've seen, so we have basically three divisions in, in sanitation. We have residential, which is the green dumpsters out front of your house. We have recycling, which is the blue dumpsters. And then we have commercial. And we've really seen a huge escalation in commercial. Commercial containers are up by 8%, and roll-off services are up by nine, but particularly our temporary services are up by 44%.
Sorry, roll-off, is that the shallow, long one that I see in front of the building site?
Yep.
Okay. And temporary is what, like the three-yard?
That's the three yards, so if you want-
The regular-looking dumpster that I'm used to seeing. Okay.
So if you want a, a temporary is, excuse me, if you want to clean your garage out, you call, we bring it, deliver it. So what that has led to, because these are metal containers, is an enormous amount of wear and tear. We're seeing our container inventory dwindling, usable containers. So when they get beat up to a certain point, we have to bring them in, reservice them. It's getting very difficult to get containers right now. Steel prices are up. Trucking is way up. And even if you can get a truck, you may not get it delivered in time. So you can actually secure a truck, pay the extra cost, but they're not gonna be here for a month and a half. So what we've done is we've started building a lot of our own containers as kind of a stopgap. So if we can't get containers and we're getting low, we order some, but then we can build some as well. And that's been really helpful, especially during the pandemic. But I just see that continuing to go because steel is getting harder and harder to find on, on large scales. So a lot of our, our container manufacturers are having a difficulty getting enough steel to make enough containers. Because it's kind of like, you can have a little, you can have little, you can have a little, instead of, here, you get a lot. It's been going on in the past.
Chris?
Yeah. So if we can build our own, then presumably, or could build our own, or we sound like we are building our own, then presumably folks like Partner Steel could also build containers. And so I'm wondering what the differential in cost between contracting out fabrication locally would be versus, you know, salary and benefits and materials, et cetera, for this position?
Absolutely. So we can buy them from the manufacturer that we get them from for $1,800 for a three-yard container. We went with that because, we haven't done it recently, so that's, that's an exercise that we can do. Historically, we've went out to the locals and they're usually a little bit more than what we can buy them from the, the people that do it all day, every day. The last containers we've built, we've been able to build with materials, wages, benefits, and everything for $1,400. So we're, we're saving about $400 a container, which, you know, I think was pretty commendable on our part, so.
Sure. And that's now, but, you know, as, you know, health costs, pay and benefits continue to increase, I mean, not saying that, that, you know, steel prices, et cetera, won't increase, but we don't know that.
Right.
And so I'm, you know, I'm just, I'm just thinking at, at what point, and then once you've got a full-time person, it's, I mean, it's not their fault if they become redundant and it becomes emotionally and legally difficult.
I understand totally, yeah. And so kind of the philosophy that we've looked at is, is our employee and benefits costs go up, so probably does the other manufacturers as well.
Right.
But in that same, same vein, a lot of what this, these mechanics or these welders will be doing is maintenance on the, on the dumpsters. We just ran short on three yards the other day, and we had 12 of them in our weld bay. We had a bunch of, like, worker ants on those things, trying to get them straightened out and taken care of so we could get them back on the road. So that will be their primary focus. When I took over sanitation, we were right in the middle of the, we had just started the rate study and you'd, for me, I didn't know what I didn't know. Historically, sanitation had always had two welders. And at some point between this late rate study and the other one, we had gone down to one. And I really haven't figured that, why we did that. And so for me, it kind of doesn't really jump out of the realm of what we had before. And so that's what the primary focus of these welders will be, is on maintenance of containers as well as trucks, so.
About Roger, then Josh, and then Claudia. And then Linda.
I see on here that curbside, or compost services is up 24%. Are we buying new containers or, and trucks for that? Because that's a specialty item.
So that's something that I probably want to bring to you folks in a study session later. We are actually at capacity right now for yard waste. We're actually, the way we design our routes is based off weight. Trucks have to weigh X. They can't weigh more than that by DOT regulations. And we've actually reached the maximum amount our trucks can haul on routes. And so as of right now, we've kind of put a moratorium on yard waste at this point because we just don't physically have the trucks to haul more or the people to start an additional route. And so that's something that, before we dive into the next rate study, that I would like to come and talk to you folks about of how far we want to go with this compost program.
That can configure with the WPC.
Yeah.
Perhaps.
Perhaps. Yep.
Okay, Josh?
You know, you talked about the increases to all usage. Do you have adequate personnel to make it to the next rate study, adequate trucks and personnel to do just regular garbage and recycling to the next rate study based on the increases you've seen and projected increases over the next couple of years?
Probably not. I think we're seeing more growth than what was anticipated in the rate study. It's, it's a struggle right now. Mondays and Fridays, if we have a person sick, it's, it's pretty chaotic right now. We've gotten to points where we've actually, the sanitation department has paid street department operators to come and help. We've tried to do cross-training on that. So I, we're just gonna have to watch and see if this growth keeps up. But especially over the last two years, it's just skyrocketed for us. So I really don't know.
Okay, follow-up.
Yeah, my follow-up then, it's not great this year. Are we going to reach, like, I mean, we had, we talked to Parks yesterday, and they're on, you know, code red, emergency. Are we gonna hit that point this year?
I think for this budget season, if we can get the, the senior operator and then the welder, what that's gonna label, enable us to do is, we actually have two people working in the weld shop right now anyway. We've just basically had to pull an operator out of a truck. And so if we, if we're able to get this welder, that's gonna free up another operator, which would really give us two, if that makes sense. I think we won't be on code red for '23.
Claudia?
Did I miss what the cost of the new senior operator will be and what the cost of the welder will be? Did I miss that?
No, I can get that for you, though.
Okay, that would just, or at least a ballpark, you know?
And the senior operator is budgeted based on the rate study.
Rate study.
The welder, we're looking at, these increased services are generating more revenue. And that's why we're hoping to cover that additional personnel through that rep.
Yeah. But yeah, if you can just send me a, or send us, I guess, an email. I just want to know what it's gonna cost.
Perfect. We can do that.
Linda?
I guess it's kind of a related question. I was just looking at the budget slide, and I was wondering why the, for pay and benefits, why the variance is, is negative? Are the new positions not factored in, or am I missing?
Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't put the new positions in, in that because that's up to you folks to decide. And then the numbers from HR that were more current, we just didn't get those into the slides.
Okay.
So it's, that's kind of just a placeholder.
So this will change?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, that was an interesting question. Oh, I'm wondering, because I think somewhere along the line, I got the idea that we might be, this is actually a question for you, Mr. Mayor, we'd be talking about impact fees. And as I'm listening to this, you know, maybe it was predictable, you know, during the whole North Gate discussions, which are applicable to all the other building that's going on, you know, there were a lot of conversations about the ancillary costs for emergency services, for necessary services like sanitation and how, you know, how we were going to be able to cover those when we have to jump quickly, like it sounds we might have to for the '24 budget. And so I'm, I'm just putting in a plug for, you know, getting that conversation on the agenda so that we can try to figure out, you know, if legally, you know, we could, we can do something that, that helps us accommodate these growth bursts.
So we've got tomorrow, council, so you know, tomorrow we're going over revenues and expenses. Tomorrow we'll need some decisions made on some of those things, and that may be covered then. If not, it'll probably be at the end of the month to, what we put, present the budget. This is what's been presented. What do you want to do? And here's all the extra stuff that everybody, that we're looking for and stuff, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so the next slide, we've kind of already addressed that, I think. We've got the questions done on that. Third, the last slide, we'll talk a little bit about Bannock County. The landfill costs are going up, or did go up from 29 to 35. And we have been in contact with the county, and they're going to maintain it at 35 for this year. And so we do have leeway based on the rate study for increased landfill fees that we think we have that taken care of. Just something we want to bring your attention.
The rate study covers that big a thing? Okay.
Recycling program, this is some of our major initiatives. We're gonna increase education based on the conversations we had before. And then we already talked about yard waste, so.
Hey, other questions for Tom for sanitation?
We do have the pay. We can give you that right now.
Oh, for the welder?
Yeah. So benefited rate, your benefited pay is $78,190.16 for the welder fabricator.
With benefits?
With benefits. And then the senior operator is with benefits is $75,520.36.
But that's in the rate study?
Correct. This one's in the rate study.
So what is your total tax ask when you take all of this and?
Right. So we run off of a fees, our fees, so we have zero tax ask.
You have no tax ask. Okay.
Yep.
Just making sure that I'm
Absolutely.
absolutely clear.
Perfect.
Okay, we'll just jump into fleet then.
Okay, so fleet services. So you can see our org chart, pretty much the same as it's been from year to year. Our budget slides, same thing with the employee costs, benefits. On this one, we just left them static. We did raise up 3%. We're asking for a 3% bump in that. Parts are going up considerably. And so we're asking for that, that small amount. The next slide just kind of shows that. In our operations, we're looking at a $26,000 increase to our parts line. One of the, one, one big issue that we're having, that we, I know we've beat this to death, is availability of pieces of equipment and, and parts. And unfortunately, we're seeing people take advantage of that. When there's not a lot of stuff to go around, prices go up. And then fortunately, fleet's not immune to that as well, so.
And when you say parts, are you talking about oil filters or big parts?
Everything.
For everything, just across the board? Okay.
Yep. So these are some service level changes that we just want to talk about. Fleet has kind of taken the lead on a CDL training program. So in February, there was some new legislation that came out from the Department of Transportation that says if you're an employer and you're helping your employee get a CDL, then there are certain guidelines that you have to follow. And if you're running a private school that's training people to get their CDLs, it requires the same training. So what we're seeing now is CDLs are costing, historically, you, you'd be into a CDL a couple hundred, $500. Now it's upwards of $4,000 to go to a school to, to get your CDL. And what that means is there's now a dedicated curriculum that you have to take. It has to be graded by a CDL direct, you know, your program person. All of it has to be documented, how many hours you spend on each part. The driving has to be documented and, and signed off by a person of how many hours they drove. It's become very, a very difficult process. So what we've done, because we help, that's one of our recruiting tools, is, is we help people that don't have CDLs get their CDLs. We let them ride or drive with a CDL operator, like if we're paving and we're able to, to allow that to happen. We let the permit e-drive while the other person teaches. And so what we've, we've had to do with this is put one person kind of overseeing that. And our service writers kind of taken the charge on that of keeping all the documentation. We were able to find a online class that costs $150 per employee to do all of the book work. And it actually documents it in this program so that we can get it to the state and the, and the federal government. And it's about $150 per employee.
And that's accredited? I mean, is that an accredited, the, the state and the feds recognize that program?
Absolutely. Yep. And so what that's done is, amongst the departments with CDLs, it's, you know, particularly, I can only speak for me, it's such a big aid for us, having CDL people, that we've figured out a way to cover this $150 for these employees on this training. They still pay for their permit and all that stuff, but we've put this in place.
So what's this?
Okay, we got Rick down here, and then it sounds like Chris.
I want to circle back to the parts question, Tom. Doesn't the department upon whose vehicle you're working pay the parts cost?
Yes.
So why would that affect your need for funding?
All we're asking is for the authority, for that extra. So fleet's kind of a bizarre layout. We're a, whatever we, bill is what we make. And so we just have to have a certain amount of authority so that as the department needs it, we have the authority to spend it and then reimburse it.
And one, one follow-up on the CDL issue. I would presume the school district and the county have the same issues with this program. Is there some way we can work together, all of, all of these governmental entities to help to conquer this problem?
Absolutely, yeah. I'd be happy to reach out to everybody. Yeah, it's, it, it couldn't have happened at a worse time, to be honest, because we, we really have a hard time recruiting CDL drivers right now. And so it, it kind of plays into our benefit a little bit if we can help them because it is so costly to go to a school right now. So we think this is kind of a home-run project that, that we're undertaking. But yeah, I can absolutely reach out.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah. So what's, under our current system or what you're proposing, what is- Yeah, so what's, under our current system or what you're proposing, what is the cost split for the CD, the, the total cost of the CDL, the cost split between the employee and the city?
I can get you all that. That would probably be easier than trying to.
Okay, and then what's, give or take, what's the, because I realize there are steps and all of that, but what would be the pay differential, if any, between a CDL driver or operator and a non-CDL operator?
So our, the way that our departments are structured is it's a requirement of the position. And so if we're interviewing people and we only, and we get applicants and none of them have a CDL, we have to determine whether we want to interview this and find the best candidate and then help them get the CDL, or just don't interview any of them and only go after CDLs. So once you get it and don't have it, if you hire someone without it, it's the same pay as if you do have it.
Okay.
But we give them six months to acquire their CDL. We have done that in the past where we have hired, you know, if we see someone that's, you know, a really good operator, so they've never had to drive dump trucks before, you know, we can, we have that ability to hire them and then we give them a six-month period to get their CDL. If they don't get it after that six months, then they.
But it's not an automatic, like having a PhD in a school district, for example? It's not that you get a bonus even if you, if your position doesn't require you to have that, if you just happen to have it?
That's right, that's written in their page or in their job description, excuse me. Okay.
How many CDLs do you think we have in the city?
Well, I can get you that.
In the city, are you talking all departments, WPC, Streets?
They've got three they're looking at here, but.
Yeah, so we've probably got, probably 60 in our building alone.
And that's the.
That's street sanitation of fleet.
And the fact that they need that is determined by powers beyond our control?
That's in their page, yep, that's in their job description.
Do you have a CDL?
I do. I enjoy plowing snow.
I have a street you can plow.
I had a CDL at one time in my life.
Yeah, well, we'll put you to work if you want to come plow snow.
Call him on a Friday when, when a sanitation guy bangs in sick, call Roger.
I'd probably have to start at ground zero.
That's all right. Okay, the next thing, this is something that we've talked about a little bit amongst staff and something that part of a recruiting issue we're having is finding people that are qualified to run equipment. And this is something that was an idea that I come up with, is try and help with that. And basically what it is, is a simulator program. So we demoed a simulator program from a company out of Salt Lake, they brought it up and it's for a CDL driver. You can get different configurations where you can learn how to drive a police car if you want, or a fire truck, or a garbage truck, or. It's, it's actually so realistic that people were getting a little motion sick from it, you know, when they were driving, because it was, but the instructor told us how to cope with that. But it was very helpful for some of our operators to, to perform in there. One of the big things as long with CDL problems is the ability to drive a truck with a standard transmission. Those are different than a car or a small pickup. A large dump truck, like a snowplow, we, we normally get those with a manual transmission, it's an 18-speed, because when you're at the bottom of a hill plowing snow, an automatic just wants to keep the gears going up and you don't have as much torque. And we are really struggling to find CDL drivers that know how to drive those. The other thing that's really nice about the, the CDL simulator is it's got a built-in, this company has actually built in a training program for safety, for operations, for hazards. I was driving it and they, I was driving a tractor trailer with a, with a 40-foot trailer and they did a simulated left front tire blow and it takes you down in the ditch and shows you how to, it was really quite impressive.
Can council do a ride-along?
Absolutely. That particular simulator was 150,000. It was, it was very, very nice. It wasn't, you know, like a, an airplane simulator where it's overly excessive. And then we're also looking at potentially some of the equipment manufacturers like Caterpillar and John Deere, they make simulators to operate backhoes, front-end loaders, skid steers, bulldozers, which is another issue we're having in recruiting is finding people. We, we do an interview and then someone will say, I've been running a backhoe for 20 years and then you put them in a backhoe and they weren't running it for 20 years.
Or they were, but out in their own field and they destroyed it.
Right. Well, and then there's also, the front of the backhoe has a bucket that's really easy, but the back has the arm you dig with and that's, and so what we're seeing, especially in, for instance, the water department for point repairs in WPC and the street department is our right-of-way is getting so cluttered with utilities. We have fiber optic going in everywhere, we have gas lines and, and these operators are, they're incredibly talented because they're able to dig around all these things. You, you rip a fiber optic cable out of the ground and you're, you know, it starts at 10,000 and goes up from there, depending on how hard it is. And so these, what we're hoping for, if this is something that you, you folks are interested in, is building some sort of a training center that we can start teaching these, all of our operators how to operate this stuff, how to operate it safely. We're hoping for lower claims for backing accidents, we see those quite frequently, as well as utility problems, digging up gas lines, which is a huge safety issue, as well as proper techniques on how to load trucks, how to shift trucks, something like that.
Okay, we got Josh here.
So you said that the one out of Salt Lake can be adapted to be for police cars, fire trucks. Does that require us to buy a completely separate, this is the fire truck unit, this is the police unit? Or is it like, they send you a separate steering wheel and software and you buy that package as well?
Like a bundle?
Yes, a bundle.
So, so if that's the case?
Yep.
So have you spoken with police and fire to see if they would be interested in?
We, we talked a little bit about it, but I didn't want to go too far until I was sure that if there was any traction from you folks on this.
So this then could be distributed among other departments who have interest?
So I've got Chris, then I've got Claudia.
It was first. Because, because fire, I know wants, it's on their wish list and so I was, that was going to be my question, because, you know, why do we need to get two completely separate programs if we can, you know, bundle? But, so I have, so I have a question. So how, how much space does this simulator require that you want to build a building?
No, we don't want to build, we just, they don't want to build.
You just want to dedicate a space?
Yes, yes.
In your building?
That's entirely up to whoever.
Okay, and then.
We could definitely facilitate it, but it's up to.
Okay, and then what would our insurance, I know, I know it would have, you know, obviously it would hopefully lower claims and whatnot from people backing into stuff, but just would this, would having this and having our drivers go through it, would that reduce our insurance rates?
I, I can't really speak to it, but I would imagine it would, but I don't know.
The fewer accidents and stuff you have, the, I would think that they would.
No, but I, and I know that, but I mean, just having it, you know, like if you have a fire, if you have an alarm system in your house, your, your homeowner's insurance rate is automatically lowered because you've got that, you know, fire reporting and all that. So could you find that out?
I would, I would expect it would, but I can't speak to it 100%, but I can find out.
I'd be surprised. So that being said, we've got Chris, Rick, Roger.
So yeah, I was just curious, kind of, I think along the lines that Councilman Mansfield was going is how would you envision costs being split among departments? Would, would it be, you know, a pay-as-you-go? Would it be an upfront cost share?
I would, I would envision that it, we could house it in one location and then just do transfers, make an hourly rate that pays for the, the equipment.
But the initial outlay, you would, I mean, would the, would this approximate 300,000 get a bundle? Or would that be simply for the operators that function kind of under your purview essentially?
So the 300 would get the simulator that does garbage trucks, dump trucks. The other thing it does, I forgot to mention, is snowplows, snowplow wings, which we're starting to use a lot more of. I believe that the, the big truck portion will automatically do the fire, it's loaded in. They can actually do pickup trucks with the same unit. I believe for like, police, you just need a different seat, they unbolt that seat and bring in a new seat with a steering wheel. I can't remember if that was included or not, but it seemed like it wasn't a large amount, but, yeah.
And so, so the, but the initial outlay, you, you're, based on this, you're envisioning the original outlay, whatever it ends up being, would be a fleet outlay and then a pay-as-you-use or?
Yeah, and that, I mean, there's a million different options we could go, you know, of how we wanted to accomplish this. I know we have some reserves in Streets, we could buy them out of there and then reimburse Streets. I, I think there's a lot of different avenues that we could use.
Okay, so I've got, let me see, I've got Rick, Roger, and then Claudia has a follow-up.
Tom, would this necessitate someone to manage this?
Yes, that would. We would probably have a training for, the way I envision it happening is, is part of, part of these, when you purchase them, they send someone out to do an onsite training. And all the departments that would be utilizing it, we would just have them designate a trainer and they would come, receive the training and then as they bring their employees over, that person would oversee it.
How many hours a week do you think this thing would be busy?
I think that, for me personally, our three departments, I would use the heck out of it, I don't know how many hours. I think there's a big demand for it. Whether it's 40 hours a week, I don't know, but I would say at least 20 to 25 a week.
Is this something that again, could be offered to the school district or the county or Chubbick, other departments to create some income for this program?
Absolutely.
I think you'd have to figure out what you're going to charge other entities outside of the city in order to, to involve them, but.
There's a, there's a huge void right now for everybody's feeling this right now of experienced operators in all aspects.
Does it do school buses?
Yep, it'll do school buses.
Okay, Roger.
My question was pretty much what Rick asked, because it looks like anytime you bring in technology that's very specific, you have to have a dedicated operator for that technology. And I don't see training a whole bunch of people as efficient as having one dedicated person, because when you're spreading people out, you're spreading their expertise out too. And so I, I would think that if we're going to do this, we'd have to have one, one person that runs this simulator for everybody.
Absolutely, okay.
Yeah, I think I disagree, having seen departmentalized, in other settings, departmentalized trainer of trainers. I think that that can actually, I think it can be, because the police driver doesn't need, necessarily need to know how the, the dump truck portion of the program functions.
I know, I'm not saying you're training an operator, dump truck, I'm saying the simulator itself.
No, no, I understand.
It's a very technical.
Right.
Program. And to bring it up and run it and have an efficiency there, I'm simply saying that you need somebody dedicated to it.
And to me, that would be the fleet person probably, since you, you, it sounds like you'd be the, in your vision, current vision, you'd, you'd be the, where it would be housed, kind of where it would be getting.
Right.
Serious use.
It's just another option that, that was thought of to try and increase recruitment, you know? I'm an Einstein guy, so the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, right? So.
Okay, Claudia.
So I may have missed this, but if this, if the program is 150,000, what's the 300,000 cover?
So that's a good question. The 150,000 covers the truck portion and then there would be another 150,000 to cover the, the machinery operation. Like there would be a second simulator for operating a backhoe, a front-end loader, so construction equipment. They don't do both.
Okay, so what I'd like to know is if, and I'm sure you can find this out from them, is what is, what would be, what is actually included in the 150? Because fire wants one of these video games and, and I, and I understand that it would be beneficial, but if we can buy one video game that everybody can use, if, you know, if we can add 50,000 to something and then it's, it's cheaper than spending another 300 to house one somewhere in the fire system. So I'd like to know.
Do you actually have the quote that I can get you?
Oh, okay.
That explains everything.
Okay, because I'd like to know what exactly is included, because if, and then what it would cost to add, so like if police isn't included, what it would cost to add? Because that might be cheaper than sending police to like defensive, you know, to, to like driving courses and stuff, because I know that that can be kind of costly.
Absolutely.
So, so I'd like to know that. And then I'd also like to know the, because I'd like to know, based on Rick and Roger's statements about, you know, could we, could we basically charge other entities? Would it be legal for, for your department, which, to make money? Or would we just have to charge what we, just enough to, you know, what to cover the hourly rate? I'd like to know that, too.
Yeah, we definitely want to get deep with Jared on this.
Yeah, because I think that's an important.
It would be our only toll road in Pocatello.
Well, and I would think we could amortize the cost of the program because they're going to, I mean, we're going to pay updates.
Update it.
And how much are the updates? That's a good, thank you. Can we find that out, too? Okay.
The nice thing is, is we're very fortunate, the company is L3 Technologies, and they do like simulators for Boeing, Lockheed Martin, everything there in Salt Lake City, right down the road. And they brought it up and it was, it was very, it was awesome.
One more question. And so this person that would handle this system, this depart, this sub-department of whatever, what do you envision, is that somebody you already have? What do you envision that person making?
That I don't know, I'd have to probably.
I mean, what would be the, you know?
I don't even know where to go.
How do you even, what's the job description? How do you, I mean, do you need a 12-year-old who plays video games all day? I'm just wondering what that, what that job would be and what it would cost.
Sorry, we'd have to put some work into that.
Okay.
Well, and that depends too, on whether we actually decide that it would be a designated person, there's been some discussion about that.
Neither way.
It's, there's other decisions that would have to be made before you'd even get to that point.
Okay, any other questions for Tom while we've got him up there? Okay, thank you very much.
No, he meant one for a.
Tom, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, there. So when you talked about personnel, because we heard what you said, we interpreted what you said differently. So when Roger asked about a person, or I can't remember, Rick? And you said it would take a dedicated person. I mean, but then you, then you talked about each department, I mean, you elaborated. So are you, because I don't see anything up there associated with that that says, and we need a person?
Yeah, so I think there's, as we've seen a couple of ways we could go about this, we would probably lean on the, the companies that produce these, of what their best, you know, what they think, how the hierarchy should run on that. But I foresee that like, a current employee could just learn the system, do it. I don't, I don't think it would require a new position. But it may require, you know, a bump or something.
Right, okay.
Just have to see what they suggest.
Exactly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, we just, as I said, we just interpreted differently and so I was trying to clarify.
I babble sometimes.
No, no.
Okay, thank you very much. We are going to go ahead, Council, have a break for really quick. And we will be back in a few minutes. Levi will be able to get set up and ready to go. So we'll be back in a minute.
Mayor, tomorrow I'll have to.
Thank you very much for joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and get started with agenda item number five, which is water pollution control. Levi Adams, Water Pollution Control Superintendent, will be present to give a presentation.
All right, good morning and thank you for your time here. We'll start off with, you know, our quick mission statement, providing wastewater and collection treatment services at the lowest practical cost for, with the highest quality. And I think. And I think that's kind of one of the keys that we have going here, is we've done an incredible job of keeping costs down and to save some money. And so this is the years we're going to be spending some of that money. So, we're kind of excited about that. Our chart really hasn't changed. We've added a few full-time individuals over the last couple of years. Nothing major. There is the ask for the utility locator positions. There'll be a lot more information brought up. I believe Jeff is going to have that in his presentation as well. So, there isn't any great, you know, there's no additional ask right there, then those utility locators are in that rate study. So, we do have the funding for that. To start off with some of our revenue, we have our farm leases for our biosolids program. That revenue covers basically the, the costs and a lot of the overtime costs. It's, it's pretty well a break even, I mean, not quite a break even, but it's a lot better than having to pay to dispose. You get a lot of communities that actually have to pay to dispose of their biosolids, where we do have a beneficial use for those biosolids. And that's going to be part of the product, or the stuff that's coming, the projects that are coming up in the next few years is going to be an additional beneficial use for those. We have our industrial building. That 11% increase is not in rates. We haven't changed the rates. That is our projection. We've been very conservative with the projections of our industries. So, the rates are still going to go up to the 3%, which is in the rate study. But I've added into the projected revenues, it's still going to be less than what the actuals are. I hate projecting a great, you know, a higher revenue without, you know, it makes me nervous to project a higher revenue.
Thank you.
With, with an industrial side, because at any point in time, you know, Amy's Kitchen decides to cut two lines out, the bill's going to drop quite a bit. So, things like that, so I always quite conservative on the revenue side of projecting. Utilities is pretty consistent. It's, you know, it's year to year, it matches rate studies.
Just before you go on, so, just to clarify, that 11.53, that is your conservative?
That is still a conservative jump. I haven't really increased those projections on the industries, like I said, because they are volatile, they can go up, they can go down. We don't have control, the utility billing the homes, unless there's a mass exodus of Pocatello, that number's really not going to change. I mean, it's going to be with the 3% increase in rates. It's pretty safe to be a 3% increase in what the utilities are, but the industries aren't, you know, there's not a lot of control that we have on the industry rate.
So, your 11.53, that includes 3% on some, just staying flat, plus 8% growth, so to speak?
That is, that is the additional rate increases, plus looking historically over what the industries have been over the last few years. We've been under projecting what the industries are going to be. And so we made a larger increase to try to get closer to what the actuals have been. And then, and then miscellaneous, the interest rates and things about it, that smaller amount right there. See, pay and benefits have, have gone down some. We've had some older employees retire, things have changed with that. The O&amp;M has gone down, as well as the capital outlay. It's kind of a, a two different capital and O&amp;M. Some of those projects are linked in together, so I've had less large projects. So, I've increased all of electrical rates, fuel, all of those different costs, chemical costs have all gone up. But some of the larger asks I've had, some of the O&amp;Ms, those are some, like the large trucks that we've bought, aren't going to be buying, those kind of things. So, my, like Tom said, our rates, you know, our costs go up and down, so it's kind of tough to say, okay, well, this year, this year's a down year, we're not going to spend as much, or next year's going to be a higher ask. So, those are rates. So, it doesn't, it looks on those lines like I'm doing something fantastic, and we are doing fantastic things, but it's not as quite, you know, we're not reducing our budget that much from that. You'll notice the, the one transfer, interfund transfers has, little slide, it has gone down, this slide has not been updated. We don't, we've gone through one of our bond payments. This is the last year where we're making one of those payments. So, that'll be an additional $1.3 million that we'll have in our budget that we don't have to pay for, that bond payment in this year. So, that 4.9 is actually 3.6.
And when you say in our budget, you mean in the rate study budget? But, I mean-
When I say it's transferred, during the rate study and as we
Right.
calculate things, $3 million is what our debt service
Right.
ask is, basically.
Right.
And that's going to be reduced by 1.3 million, because now we only have one bond, because we had essentially two loans, one loan's come to
Right.
maturity, is being paid off.
Right. But you said it would be in your budget, which makes it sound that even though the bond payment ends, the 1.3 million-
We're still going to collect
Is still going to-
revenue.
Right.
But because next year, we're going to have a larger ask for some larger capital projects.
Right, so you're, you're morphing what that money, the ask is the same, but the purpose to which the money is put is changing.
Yeah, we're going to use it for something beneficial rather than paying back money, which is good news. That's kind of the, the concept, the overall
Right.
idea, you know, Jeff and I both came in at a similar time, you know, we saw our loans and things like that. Our decision was, you know, we're going to try to spend money that we have and not money that we don't. So, we're going to try to build revenue, we're going to try to build savings and construction funds, and spend that money rather than go look for bonds and loans to pay for these high-end, high-capital projects.
Right. Thank you.
And then, like I said, we have a one-time transfer to that construction fund. Normally, we transfer in for the rate study, $1.3 million a year. We have built, because we've kept costs down, our revenues have been higher than projected, we have additional fund in our operating budget, our O32. So, we're going to transfer 4.5 million into our construction fund. That money is going to be put for our dewatering program, for some work, there's several things we'll show on a later slide, but that's a one-time transfer. With that, we will still have plenty of money left to cover our required reserves as well.
It's just a year to, to do the building that the-
This is the year, this is-
The rate study has said, okay, hold off, and then you're going to do it this year, and then you're going to, that's-
We've actually, we've outperformed our rate study. We've done, when I say we, that's the crew behind me, has done an incredible job of keeping costs down, being as efficient as they possibly can. And so, we've actually been able to increase that money a lot faster than we would have normally done. So, then we go into some of our, some of our projects this year. We do our CIPP, that's the, the maintenance on all of the, I shouldn't say all of the certain parts of line, that's a replacement of sewer lines that are in place in the city. We have some aging infrastructure. We have a, an emergency generator at one of the lift stations that's been there since 98. It's time to be replaced. Parts on that are hard to get thing. HVAC system in our lab, again, is 20 years old, in a very rough environment, it's time to, time to replace that as well. Again, you can see I highlighted the, the 4.5 million in our, the transfer, which is a big change. Simple things, a couple pickup trucks, we have some aging trucks that need to be removed, so we'll replace those. And then, as well as a service truck and an updated camera for our collection systems.
Okay, we've got a question from Roger.
The 4.5 million, is a majority of that going to be construction of the building out there?
Yeah, there's, there's several things out there. On the next slide, I'll show you, we got a good list of all the projects that we're going to do with that money. So, if there's no more questions, we can, we can jump to that one. Maybe? Okay. So, again, you can see that we've, we've, doing our annual transfers, we have a fair amount of money in that budget, or in that fund, as well as that one-time transfer. I keep trying to point to the screen, but you guys can't see that screen anyways. So, it's not, failing twice on that one. So, we have some major copies. These have all been laid out in the facility plan, you know, we've, we've brought the facility in before you, you know, we've brought the engineering services before you guys as well, and this is, this is the continuation of those different projects. Aeration basin system improvement, again, aging infrastructure we need to improve, we have increased loads to the plant, that needs to be addressed. We have some repairs to one of our digester lids, it's a, it's a metal tank that needs to be recoded. It's at its lifespan, it needs to be taken care of. And again, the dewatering project, like I said, that 7.1 million, that's the, the building, the equipment, you know, the process that is going to be that major change in, in what we're doing. It's a difference in philosophy. We've, we've been able to, in the past, land apply the, the liquid biosolids, because fuel costs are down, employee costs weren't as expensive, you know, we had a good working relationship with the farmlands and the, the lands that we have, and it's time to change gears, it's time to change into something else. Even, you know, quality of, of the work-life balance, I have operators that go, and when it's time to haul biosolids, it's six, eight, 10, 12 weeks a year, where these guys are working six hours a day, six days a week, 12 hours a day. Nobody wants to do that anymore. And, you know, the paychecks are nice with all the overtime and the comp time, but nobody, and I don't blame them for wanting to work that many hours. It's usually in the summer when people want to do things with their family, and that, that balance. And so, being able to attract employees, it's not wages anymore as much as it is, you got to have a balance. You got to let these people know that, hey, you know what, your entire summer's not going to be spent at work. You're going to have time to do this with these people. And so, there, there's many reasons why we're going to this dewatering. And again, we're moving on to, hopefully, go into composting. I know, I've listened to you guys talk to Tom. I would love for you guys to have Tom get started on this, and he can get all the bugs worked out, and then I can slide in afterwards and help.
So, let him do all the heavy lifting?
Yeah, get a start.
And then you'll just, you'll just come in and, yeah.
And I'll stand in the back.
Good plan.
Hey, look what we got going on, we're doing great.
And be in the photo.
Yeah.
Good plan.
Yeah, and we've visited several other facilities, a lot of those communities will have separate composting facilities, but then they all bring it into one spot and sell it. So, there'll be the municipal waste, or the green waste compost, as well as the biosolids compost and other things. And so, having it separate, and maybe it's in one spot, maybe it's a fleet that they can control, or, or whatever, that's, that's, you know, remains to be seen.
Chris?
This may be a, a Tom slash Levi question, but kind of following up on what Councilman Cheatham has been talking about in terms of vending our, our opportunities to other communities and other entities. I'm wondering whether or not we can even think about, with yard waste, for example, you know, can, can we also be, is it, would it be beyond our capacity to be a collection site for some other entities? I'm thinking, you know, who, I mean, we'd sort of be taking, maybe taking some money from the landfill side of things for other entities, other communities.
I can answer that on, from my perspective, on the, the waste treatment side. We don't want to do that because we inherit their problems. When you take biosolids from, let's just say, American Falls, we have, we don't have control over their pretreatment, we don't have control of what industries they have, so we don't have control of what's in those biosolids.
Right.
And so, I don't think it's a good idea to pull from those other
Right.
communities without having the control. I mean, it's the same thing that we, you know, the, the fight that we have with the city of Chubak
Right.
we're working through, and we're, we're being efficient with that, but to try to get from other entities into Pocatello, I don't think it's a great idea, because once we get it, it's our fault as far as
Right.
the federal regulations go on.
Right, and I was thinking more on the green, green side. I mean, I know there was pesticides, and yeah, yeah, but I, I, it was just a question.
Yeah, I think there's definitely opportunities there. We probably just want to talk with Jared, make sure there's no legal pitfalls with that, but I don't see why that would be a problem at all.
Okay. That's why I said, I think, it's kind of a Levi-Tom question.
Tom's a lot easier to get along with. I like saying no.
At $35 a ton out to the landfill, it seems like the yard waste thing would really save us a lot of tonnage out there.
Yeah.
Because I know when I mowed my lawn, that was my heaviest of my three containers.
Yeah, they do charge us at a smaller rate. I think it's only $10 a ton, but they do charge us, so.
And we could, they get to sell it.
Right.
Or we would get to sell it.
Yes.
But like me, I don't get a green waste container, because Tom won't give me one.
Well, yeah.
I don't get one, because I don't get one because I'm old.
So, all mine goes in at $35 a ton to the landfill. And speaking of the dewatering project coming up, as we've, we've gone through the engineering, what you'll see coming up shortly is we did pre-purchase, or didn't, we did a bid to pre-purchase the actual equipment because of the, the long leads on equipment. It's, it's one of those things that you're probably going to see a lot more when we start doing construction projects, is not waiting for a whole bid. We will pre-purchase the equipment and then have the, then do a bid for the contractor to come do the work. Lead times are so long that it's one of those that we need to get done. So, that's, we've had that bid opening, we have the results, those should be coming probably in the next couple of weeks, I would say, within the next one or two. Council meetings, you'll see me back with, with, with those. One thing I do kind of want to highlight is the, the admin building came in quite high. We did, we, all these cost estimates were done back in May, so they're fairly recent. And what they're estimating, that admin building is now up to 3.3. The building we could have built in 19 for $2 million is now 3.3.
Wow.
It's, you know, hopefully, we can, we can find the, the revenue source and the funds to do that, that's probably going to be a year or two. Hopefully, we don't have to go all the way into the next rate study to find the excess, or find the funds to finish that off, because then it's going to be, you know, $4 million. But it's, it's one of those things, we, you know, when we have the projects and we're ready to go and we have the funding, we need to, to be able to act on, on those things. I feel like we're being pretty prudent with what we're doing now, and we need to make sure that when those come up, you know, the, the column on the left, that 11.3, hopefully, that's where it is. There's some contingencies built into that. I mean, we're up to a 30% contingency in those costs. To be hopefully safe on those, like I said, we'll have 12.5, so we'll have the money in the, the accounts, the, we haven't transferred over the money out of our operating fund into that for the, the admin building, it's still sitting in the operating fund, but hopefully, those come in cheaper and we can transfer and add that admin building in. But that's kind of the, the disappointing news where we're at right now. We will still have design done, we'll bring the design up to 90%, but I don't know if we're going to go beyond that in construction until we have the actual funds to do it.
Good job.
Can you answer my question? Oh, forget it.
Okay. If there's no more questions, you know, we just want to highlight one thing. We talk about the amount of money we're spending, the things that we're doing, even with our 3% increase in our rates, we're still very competitive as far as what it costs to, to treat wastewater here. I, I'm going to do a little Tom here and brag about what we got. We have one of the nicest treatment plants in the, in the state of Idaho. People come looking to us to understand, or to, to see what it's supposed to look like, to see how things are, to see the right way to do things, and that's this plant here. It, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's the Boise Valley or up north or whatever. You know, my predecessors and the, the operators that have worked for me have done a great job, having a wonderful facility, and yet still, we keep our costs low. We keep the, the rates extremely reasonable. You know, it's, it's prudent to continue to add that 3% to, to keep increasing, so we can keep that way. You know, it's, it doesn't make sense to, to have something that we have and then just hold off and not continue to keep it in the shape that it's in right now.
Okay, it looks like I've got Rick and then Chris.
Levi, what's your current capacity rate? I mean, are we at 60% of capacity, or where do we stand?
We are 65 to 70% of capacity. It's a, it's not that easy of a question. You start talking flow, we're there, you know, like I said, we're at that 67% capacity, you start talking loading, it's a little closer to 70 or 80. When we built that facility plan, we built different triggers into it. So, depending on when we hit certain milestones, in whether it's the amount of BOD that comes into the plant, or the amount of flow, we'll do different things. We're in pretty good shape right now. The, the construction projects that we, we saw on that last slide are the needs that The construction projects that we saw on that last slide are the needs that we have right now. Like I said, there's, I have, you know, the facility plan and the capital improvement plan in that facility plan. I got another $30, $40 million worth of projects, but they're not triggered yet. They're not to the point. But we do have triggers in that says, hey, you know what? When we hit 10 million gallons a day, we're going to, we're going to do this project. When we hit, you know, 10,000 pounds a day of BOD, we're going to do this project. And so, we're in good shape. We're happy where we're at, you know. But like I said, we need to continue to move forward. The seewatering project has been in the works for four or five years now. And we're excited that we're going to start seeing shovels on the ground and quit talking about things and getting stuff done.
Can you remind me of the amount of water discharge?
We're approximately 7 million gallons a day is what goes into the port.
Chris?
Yeah. First of all, I'm sad about the admin building because I was really excited.
I agree.
That you were finally going to get that.
We're scheming, we're planning, we're going to, we're going to get her done as soon as we can.
So I'm commiserating with you on that. And so, can you, and this is going to be a huge ballpark, I know. But given our 30, 35% remaining capacity or whatever, depending on which metric you're addressing, roughly how much more development can we sustain before we're at the, okay, now we can't, even if we have land, we can't go farther because we don't have wastewater?
Oh, as far as within the city here?
Right.
That's a hard question to ask.
I, that's why I say.
You have commercial, you have industrial, you have residential.
I understand, yeah, no, no.
And like Levi said, we have trigger points in the rate study that say, hey, once you hit this level of flow, you need to do this.
Right.
Or once you hit this level of loading, you need to do that. And so, we can't really say, yeah, we can add another 2,000 holes.
No, and that's why I say, I know, I know it's a kind of impossible question. But I think it's, kind of goes along with the, you know, the Aquifer question. I mean, how many straws can you keep sticking in a glass of water before the fact that you can build a straw doesn't produce any water? And it's kind of the same, you know, the same kind of a question. So, all right, so I'm.
And to kind of answer that in a little bit, we have the space to make the improves. I mean, we could, with the area that we have and with the improvements, you know, having money not be an object that we need to talk about.
So if you had to jump, you could.
We could delve inside the city. We could over time. As things are built, we will continue to grow. And that's where we need to be.
And you alluded to one of my favorite topics, which is the Chubbick situation. And I'm just curious where, I mean, are we on, are we, are we where we should be with that situation?
The Chubbick talks have kind of have stalled out because their flow has actually gone down slightly. They're not pumping up as well anymore. We've pushed on them and got their pretreatment program going and discussed them some best management practices and got some things. And so, their loading has gone down and their flow has actually gone down. I have some theories about why their flow has gone down.
If it's yellow, let it mellow.
Not quite. It's more of like an I and I.
That used to be the thing in California in the 70s. If it's yellow, let it mellow. Just saying.
You know, I think there's, I think there might be some issues within their system or some I and I with the drought that their flows are just lower than what they were. I don't think they're reducing the amount of people online. But I think with that down, there's no driver for them to make changes to the current agreement. So if they're not wanting to make the changes in the agreement, we don't have anything to push back and say, okay, well, these are what we want to see. There's five years left on that current agreement.
Yep, but thank you.
Who knows for next year what it's going to be? It's still right there. It's still, there's still a file right behind my desk. I'm on top of it, but it's.
Yeah, it sounds like, thank you for being on top of it and thank you for the, you know, the update. I appreciate it.
Linda?
So on the admin and operations building, and I know you're well aware of this, but I just feel compelled to point out how this is the perfect illustration of how when we have the money for something that we have been putting aside for something that has a specific purpose we've been saving for, that we need to spend it. We need to do it at that time because now look at how much this has gone up. So that being said, my question is about the revenue is $12.5 million and the estimated construction expenditures are $11.3 million. So you got about a $1.2 million difference there. And I was just curious about what the plan is for that $1.2 million. Just hold on to it.
It might become an admin building.
Could it?
It could be. I would hate to spend up to $12.5 and then have construction come in at, you know, that $7 million turn into $10.
Yeah.
You know, and that's where it's going to be. When these projects come in, they're going to be siloed as far as, you know, the bid. You're going to have all these different things. And if it comes in too high, we'll have to, you know, we're not going to do this, we're not going to do that. Hey, guess what? It came in at $5 million. Well, then, you know, maybe we add a bid to get the admin building done.
And that's kind of my question is, is that money, I mean, I understand what you're saying about you need to have that cushion in case something comes in over. But is it possible to use that money if it were still available for the admin building?
As long as I have the council approval.
If we approved that. There's no restriction is what I'm asking.
And there was some discussion, yeah. And that's, like I said, it's all with council approval. And we've had some discussions. This $11.3 million is not budgeted. It's not in my budget right now. This is just.
Projection.
This is what I bring for you so you guys know what's going to happen when I come. Because it'll have to be budget amendments. We're going to get this done within this budget year. I don't have true numbers. I don't have bids that can say, this is what I am. So I don't feel comfortable putting it into a budget saying, hey, you know what? My revenue's $12 million, but I'm going to spend 35 and, you know, throw up a bunch of red flags. I'm here, the revenue's there. I want to put this there so you guys know that the money's there. And so, when I come ask that, hey, you know what? We have this bid for this project. It's $10 million. If you remember, we got 12 and a half waiting to spend. Let's go to it. And thanks for pointing out my passive-aggressive way of saying, yes, I want to spend this money that I have right now.
Oh, no, I didn't miss that.
Claudia?
Just wanted to highlight that.
So if, so if, because inflation and the cost of everything is going up, and I know you've added a buffer, oh my God, this microphone. And I know you've added a buffer. I feel like the lady at Kmart. But if push comes to shove, what, if you could only do, if you, which one would you absolutely want to do? If, say, you know, the bids all came in and they were just through the roof high, what would you, what do you see in those projects there that would be your, we got to do this for sure?
I have to do the watering.
The, the.
The de-watering.
Okay, that's what I kind of figured. That's what you would say.
That's the one that I absolutely have to do. The lid repair on number three is one, but it can be, we're adding a mixing to kind of change the process up a little bit, which will work better for us. That's, you know, there's a million dollars off there that we could pull because we do have to recote the lid because it's a metal lid and it's time to get that.
And I'm not, and I'm not suggesting that you don't get them all done. But I'm just saying, you know, things being what they are. I mean, we saw the building go up, you know, $1.3 million. So if some of these projects come in a lot higher, okay.
And the engineering firm we're working with has been very conservative on what they've done. You know, the, their, the bids that came in on the slash project were all under what they estimated as well. So that, you know, that gave us hope for some things, you know, that things. I think they padded their numbers enough. So, you know, they didn't tell us, hey, it's going to be $5 million when it's really, they think it's going to be $8. They were very honest with themselves and in fact, probably overestimated the cost is what, kind of what we're hoping for. So we'll, you know, we'll see how things go. But it's a matter of bid timing. You get the right construction company that's hungry and wants to do it, we could have a great price. You get, everybody's really busy, we could have horrible prices.
Nobody's hungry right now. Any other questions?
Hey.
Roger. Nobody's hungry. You know that.
As I look at things, we're only one or two businesses away from everything changing. Because if they come in and they need a lot of affluent discharge and they have a certain sediment or mineral or metal or something that's part of their process, everything goes off the chart. And so, part of our ability to be responsive has to be kind of on this yearly basis so we can be anticipatory of anybody that's coming in and how we could incorporate them. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement. I think, you know, luckily, when you have something that's of that size, it takes time to get built as well. And we won't necessarily be ahead of it, but we'll be right there with it moving forward. It's nice having an engineering firm that we're working with right now that can act quickly on those sorts of things, that can deal with, you know, what there is. And then, of course, if you have a large industry that comes in, they're going to pay a large connection fee. It's going to be a fair amount of money that will help fund some of these as well. And I'm not, in that transfer, that one-time transfer, I'm not emptying the piggy bank to do that. It's a number that I am extremely comfortable with. We still have what were required, our federal requirements for, you know, the 90 days of O and M in our operations count plus a fair amount as well. And so, that's, I'm comfortable that if I have to, for say, add another clarifier, I have the money to do that. Or if I have to add something that. And there's also requirements on the pretreatment side of things. If you have a major industry, the requirement say, hey, you know what? You need to treat this water to a certain point before you get it. And they're usually amiable in that sort of ask because that will reduce their bill considerably as well. And so, it's a give and take. And, you know, if somebody, nobody's going to come and suddenly give us an extra million gallons a day tomorrow. It's going to be a process. But we're, you know, we're nimble enough that we can handle a certain amount of expansion and we'll be ready to add those processes that needed to be.
Okay, any other questions for Levi? Super, thank you, Levi. We'll move to agenda item number six is Human Resources Department. Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director, will be present to give presentation.
Nice lead-in for you.
I'm trying to get it.
Well, these huge departments, and then here comes HR. Makes you a little budget.
F5, Heather.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Heather Buchanan. I'm the Human Resources Director for the city of Pocatello. So I'm here to talk about human resources and the wellness program. And then I will follow up with educational funding requests for fiscal year '23. So Human Resources currently has four employees. And then Risk Management also falls underneath HR. Legal had mentioned the transition we made last year, and I think that's working very well for us. So we're excited for the progress and the savings we've seen there. My operating budget, so wellness has remained flat at the $49,550. We run the wellness program with the money that we are allotted and we rarely come and ask for more. The program continues to have good participation. We continue, and specifically, continues to come up with new challenges to keep people engaged. We are hoping to do our regular health fair, which you might not have seen because that was pre-COVID, which feels like a decade ago. But we are planning to returning to that format this fall. Human Resources is looking for an increase of our operating budget of around $20,000. Now, as you've looked at all these slides from all these departments and Councilmember Stevens has asked everyone's budget question, I kind of feel like I'm the person spinning the child with the donkey tail and they're trying to put a pin on something and I keep moving the target. No one's numbers you've seen are currently accurate because they've been taken at different points during salary projections. So the numbers you see later on are probably not going to match anything they brought before you. And I'm really sorry about that, but it's been a learning opportunity for us all. So I am asking for an increase in my budget this year. Half of the increase is one-time money. We would only need it in fiscal year '23. So we need, we would like to increase the rec line by $35. This is a lot less than Levi's $11 million. One of my one-time costs is to send two employees to an investigation training. HR, legal and risk have been working on some new policies that we're getting ready to bring to council. Part of that is we need one last good training on best practices for disciplinary issues. So that's what this training provides us. We've increased our ADA and FMLA knowledge by adding some subscriptions that roll out across the nation. Between the administrations we've seen in the last couple of years, our policies at a federal level change what feels like on a daily basis. So we have to make sure we're matching up with best practices. And then I would need travel for one year to get us to that conference that we're looking to attend. So our increase there is just about $20,000. There is a decrease to our consulting line, which is the bottom table. We talked about that briefly during the benefits presentation. EAP for regular employees, so non-emergency responders, is housed out of HR. With our cost savings by changing vendors and our rate lock, we are looking at a slight decrease there of around $9,000. And then HR would request some money in our variable hour or part-time line. One is for an intern to help with some research. And then we would possibly looking, having a summer seasonal worker. After listening to departments beat on the seasonal pay scale yesterday, I'm a little hesitant to even mention the words. But there is a lot of filing that we're catching up with, with the transition over in the police department and manager. We have pulled all their personnel files over into HR. And so, we have to audit both their files and our files and integrate them. That's a lot of work and we've done it before and we'll do it again. But it just makes our processes cleaner if we can make sure that we keep up on those practices. Any questions?
Why would you pay the intern significantly more than the seasonal person?
So the seasonal person would fit within our pay scale. It would just be a basic office function, whereas the intern would be higher, doing higher level of research and analysis for us.
Okay.
Any other questions for Heather? Okay.
Sorry, trying to get us all out of here by lunch.
She's not done. That was just.
That was just warm-up.
We're not even close to an intermission with her, I don't think, so.
So educational funding requests for fiscal year '23. As you know, we do provide help to employees who are going to school, college credits. When they complete the program, they're eligible for reimbursement. We had several requests this year. In fiscal year '22, we have $23,000 worth of outstanding costs that would either conclude this summer or this early fall. For fiscal year '23, we have requests of $51,500. When we compare that to our account balance, we do not need to pull any additional funds into this, from the departments into this fund. We can cover within our existing balance. So if everyone executes in fiscal year '23, there would still be $42,000 left.
So there's no tax ask. We've got the money. It's just.
We're fully funded to the point where we need to be in this fund.
Okay.
Any questions for Heather?
It's all you.
Oh.
I thought you had a lot more than that.
That's it. That's it today. You'll see me again. It's a much longer presentation.
We'll get her there tomorrow for sure. Okay, super. Then we will move to agenda item number seven, which is our Planning and Development Services. Brent McLean, Planning and Development Service Director, and Kristi Howt, CDBG Program Manager, will be present to give presentations.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Good to be with you this morning. So just to go through our structure a little bit. That structure hasn't changed. As you can see here, we do have two different divisions within the Planning and Development Services Department, the Planning Division and the Federal Grants Program, which Christine helps me manage. And so, our structure hasn't changed at all from last year. As far as the Planning Department goes, you can see just our expenditures here. We're seeing about a $30,000 increase in our salaries and benefits. Also, we're looking at an increase in our materials and services of about $24,000. And I'll get into what I'm asking for in that increase. Overall, that's about a 6% total increase in our budget. And there is a decrease in our transfer in other costs. Our employees in the Planning Department haven't changed. We have six employees currently, and that projection is to continue. So one of the things I also want to talk about real briefly is at the end of this slide, we are working with IT, the Building Department and Engineering about looking to do. with IT, the Building Department, and Engineering about looking to do a new permitting software. And Richard will get into more detail about what that is going to entail. But that's something that we would like to, to ask from the council this year. So some of the, one of the things that we did want to ask, though, in our salary and benefits is, and I'll go back to the previous slide, we're looking for an increase in our overtime budget of about $4,800. That is not included in my projection. I would like to add that. And part of the reason for that is, in the Planning Department, we have one, one person who is not an exempt employee, and it, the, the management assistant position, and this position provides a lot of support services to our commissions, and requires a lot of extra hours, evening hours. And so they participate in the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Hearings Examiners, which are all after-hour meetings. And, and so what I found since I've been here is, our overtime budget is currently about $900. And that disappears really fast. And so we end up having a lot of comp time associated with that position, which means they are not in the office when I actually need them in the office. And so what I'd like to do is increase that overtime budget to provide some more flexibility as to whether they're taking comp time or overtime, so I can actually have that position filled in the office when I need them during the day in the office. And so I'm requesting that, that bump in our overtime to, to help, help offset that.
Claudia?
What, is this better and more cost-effective than making that non-exempt person an exempt person?
I'd have to talk with, with Heather about that, but based on the job description, I don't believe it can be an exempt position.
Okay. She's, she's shaking her head, so no. Okay.
And so it, it just helps create a little more flexibility for me and personnel during, during the regular business hours, instead of having large gaps of time when.
Can you go back to the previous slide for just a quick sec? Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So that's the real reason for the ask and, and increase in the, in the overtime. The other thing I want to talk about is our service level changes and major initiatives. So I had asked for an increase of about $24,000 in my operating budget. And the primary purpose of this is to increase my personnel, or my professional service line item, to hire a consultant to help with rewriting our zoning ordinance. We're completing our comprehensive plan, or comprehensive plan, and with the information we receive from that plan, we want to incorporate some of the ideas that we generate from that plan into the zoning ordinance. But also, it's, it's not written really clearly. There's a lot of loopholes and inconsistencies, and we've been trying to address some of those things as we've gone along over the last few years. But what we're finding is, we just really need to do a total rewrite of, of the zoning ordinance. And so the anticipated cost for the, the whole service is about $80,000. I intend to move about $30,000 from my budget this year forward to cover a portion of that. And I've adjusted some of my line items within my existing budget of the remaining $50,000, so I would only need an additional $24,000 to, to cover that, that $80,000. So that's why there's that increase of about $24,000. Again, the other thing I just wanted to briefly touch on is the permitting software. It's going to be a great asset to our community, to serve the members of the public, to serve developers, to serve even the, the workflows within the city, that it will help streamline what we do. It'll, it'll create a better experience for our citizens. It'll also reduce the amount of space we need as far as personnel. It'll reduce the needs for filing cabinets and just physical space. And, and so it, it really will help streamline our services. And, and again, Richard will get into that further. I believe he's tomorrow.
Brent, Josh has a question for you.
Maybe, maybe this will just be tomorrow, and I should just wait. Is this just a one-time tax ask to spend? Is it coming out of?
It'll, it'll be a one-time ask for the setup. Then there's a yearly maintenance agreement with it. But we do currently have a yearly maintenance agreement for the system that they're using now. And so there's some offset in there. And I think the yearly amount is actually less than what we are, are paying now. So, but Richard will get into that more tomorrow. So. And then I'll let Christine go from there.
Oh, we, it looks like we have a couple of questions. Chris, Chris, and then Claudia.
It's the same question. Go ahead.
All right. Okay, Chris.
So would, so you talked, you've talked about working with the Building Department. So is, are these costs just the Planning Department portion, or this is like?
This is the, the whole umbrella.
You're speaking comprehensively. Okay, thank you.
And it'd all be a, a single system to serve all of us.
But you're going to pay for it.
Well, it would come out of the Building Department. I'm just putting a plug in for it.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right.
I'm working you. I'm working you.
I like that.
Any other questions for the other teaming up is the problem. Any other questions for Brent before we move to Christine? Okay.
All right. Good morning, Council, Mayor. Nice to be before you and with Brent to present our federal grant programs. So essentially, I'll just provide a summary of the grant programs and our set federal funding that we're, we'll be receiving in the upcoming fiscal year. So as you can see on this first slide, this is our CDBG grant. Our entitlement for program year 22 was $426,268. As you know, the program years for CDBG don't align with the city's fiscal years, so we do have carryforward of previous program years that go into these numbers. Our salaries and benefits are increasing based on the step, the regular step changes. The program costs are essentially level, and those include most of our administrative supplies and expenses there. And then the biggest chunk of funding comes from our subrecipient awards and projects. Those are all of our local partners that we award grant funding to, as well as our renewal home rehab program and the sidewalk program.
And your funding is down seven, your federal money is down 7% this year, right?
Yeah, it's, it's about 7%, or about $35,000 from the previous program year. Yes.
And is, is that something that the Fed is doing across the board, or is there something about our program that resulted in that reduction? And I'm, I'm not fault-finding. I just.
It's, it's across the board. The federal appropriation for CDBG was, was decreased, and then there are additional entitlements that come on every year. And so it just spreads the funding out more, and we, everyone gets a little bit less. Some cities were hit worse than us. I think Napa had almost a 20% decrease. Others, maybe like a 2%. So it's, however, HUD arranges the formula.
Thanks.
In addition to CDBG, we also manage our LED Safe and Healthy Homes Grant. We were re-awarded this in November of '21. This grant has a three-and-a-half-year period of performance, and so we will continue to conduct that program. And we did see an increase here due to the increased grant award. The majority of the increase came in our direct expenses we're anticipating. So that includes the Healthy Homes projects, which are new for this program year. We can spend approximately $5,000 per home that qualifies for the LED program there. And the LED remediation costs are also increased just because of the cost of construction. And so the majority of that comes out of that line, but that program will continue to move forward. The program cost line is slightly increased as well. This is what we projected out for things like our marketing and outreach, as well as any equipment or supplies we'll need to purchase through the grant program. But these numbers were pretty much set in the budget that was approved by HUD when we awarded the funding. And our last federal grant that we oversee at this time is our CARES Act funding. This is our CDBG CV funding. And this goes toward our rental assistance program, as well as the public services program that we were able to fund, our local partners who prepare for, prevent, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. So there is still some funding available there. We anticipate spending that down in this next fiscal year. And the majority of that, again, goes toward the rental assistance and the public services with some administrative costs for things like printing or office supplies. And all of our staff time comes out of the other positions with direct service coming out of the project lines as we charge our specific time to administering that.
Yes. Go ahead. I'll wait till you're done. Nope, that's it. Oh, that's your whole thing? Oh, okay.
I have one more. I have one more. It's just a summary of the funds here. So you can see the summary of our program year 22, CDBG funds, our LED grant overall. And then this slide was the remaining on the CARES Act funds, and that's gone down slightly to about $150,000 year-to-date. So.
Super. Claudia?
Okay. So we had some nonprofits, this microphone drives me crazy, come and present before us, and one of them was the Free Clinic. And the Free Clinic received, I think they, they said that they received $10,000 of CDBG.
They received about $93,000 in CV funds, COVID funds.
In COVID funds.
They have not received a CDBG entitlement grant, but they haven't applied for that.
So what was the $10,000? Okay. Well, okay, so, so I'm obviously not remembering correctly. But my, my point is, they came in, the nonprofits that did come in, there were three, I think, three or four, they came in and they presented, you know, very detailed financial reports to us and, and everything else. And, and they had, you know, numbers of, of clients that they'd served and in what capacity. And, and I personally really appreciate that, especially when your funds are limited. And, and, and I just want to, I just want to put out there that I don't think anybody should be getting money if they can't come here and give us a similar-type presentation. And specifically, I'm talking to organizations like Big Mama's House. They seem to have essentially vanished, their presence is, is essentially non-existent in the community. But I know that they, I know that they get CDBG or CV money, or whatever we're calling it. But we haven't had any updates from them, zero whatsoever in, since the time I've been here. And so I just think that if, if we're going to give CDBG funds to organ, local organizations to do outreach and to fill gaps in our community, it needs to be to organizations that can actually come here and say, this is our financial statement. This is the number of people we've served. We've done it in this capacity, just like the others did a couple of weeks ago. That, that's all I'm saying. And I think you, you do a tremendous job, by the way, doing what you do. And, and I'm not trying to say this in a, in a way that makes it seem like you're not doing your due diligence or your job. I'm just saying that as the council, the council should have that expectation.
We do require our subrecipients and grantees to submit an annual report, and HUD requires us to report on the beneficiary data, so those clients that are served by the program. So we do gather that data and submit it in our annual report. It's got a long acronym, but the acronym is the CAPER. So that is typically due on July 1. And we can provide that report to the council. So you can see a break, I can make it into a format that is more user-friendly than the HUD format, but it does break.
Don't you present on that when you come?
Yes, we, we have presented that in the past.
You've presented the CAPER to us.
Yes.
The, the.
It's a big document.
Notchel version of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, and I don't, and I'm not talking about us seeing your financial report. I'm talking about if nonprofits are coming to you as part of a city program to ask for money, those nonprofits should come here and say, this is what we need, and this is why, and this is what we're doing with it. That's all I'm saying.
Chris?
Yeah, my question of kind of along the same, the, the same line is, so what, I mean, what, what, what do you require in order to fill out your HUD report? Just general, what, I mean, what kinds of documentation? Because saying, you know, oh, I did XYZ is one thing, being able to demonstrate some kind of statistical basis that substantiates that is, is another, another situation. So what, what are the documentation requirements from the nonprofits that you do subsidize?
There's quite a bit of documentation at different points throughout the grant process. So as we award our subrecipients, we conduct our technical assistance meeting, explaining to them everything we need through the federal program. And then they complete our application, which includes them submitting, you know, financials, either their, their tax return as a 501(c)(3) or their single audit, if they rise to that occasion, that level in terms of federal funding, or if they get an audit conducted. We also, if they're rewarded, you know, they, they demonstrate how many beneficiaries they plan to assist through their program. So they have to align with not only our consolidated plan, but also the national objectives established by HUD, and ensure that they're going to meet the beneficiary requirements in terms of serving the low to moderate income populations. And so once we establish that, then they present their program to the advisory committee for, you know, the amount they're looking for and anticipated number of beneficiaries they'll serve. The advisory committee usually takes that into consideration when making a recommendation to this body. In addition, we also consider if the agency will provide a match, so if they have some, some support on their end that they'll be putting into the program. And once they've determined that they can comply with all of the HUD regulations, then they may be awarded their full ask or reduced amount, depending on how much funding we have available. At that point, we'll include that in our annual action plan, which comes before this body for approval. And then that's submitted to HUD. And once we get our appropriation, we award the subrecipients and have about a 12-page subrecipient agreement that outlines all of the federal requirements they have to follow. And then throughout the process, as they submit for reimbursement, we have backup documentation to confirm that those expenses are legitimate. So they have to provide things like payroll timesheets if we're reimbursing for a position, or copies of the payments they would have made. So in the case of rental assistance, for example, they have to show the client. And there's a lot of personally identifiable information, so we have to keep that confidential and secure. And essentially, enough backup documentation that we can prove that that is a true expense that they incurred, and then we reimburse them, and then we'll submit that to HUD for reimbursement. And once that's all done, we also do subrecipient monitoring, where we go in. And we choose our subrecipients based on their risk level. HUD has kind of a risk analysis we can go through to determine which ones to monitor, and ensure that they have all the proper backup documentation at their location for the monitoring. And then that all gets summarized in the CAPER, and then HUD could monitor the city at any point, so we keep documentation on file as well. And like I said, they submit their annual report at the end of the year, and everything gets uploaded into the HUD database. So it's quite a bit of paperwork. Each program recipient file is, you know, this thick. But we ensure each step of the way, as they're going through the program year, that we're getting all the proper documentation, or else we can't really release funds or get funds in. So a lot of it is driven by making sure that's there as we put funds in and out.
I have some other questions, but I'll contact you separately. Thank you.
Anytime.
Any other questions, Council? Super, thank, you got a question?
I have a comment.
Are you asking Christine? Or are you, are you asking a question to her?
I just wanted to note that in my budget, we received a Brownfield grant of $500,000, which isn't included in this budget. I'm not sure. I'm not sure exactly, I need to work with the mayor of where we're going to house that, if that's going to be in my budget or some other way. So as you go through the budget process, you'll see that Brownfields grant show up somewhere as a $500,000 expenditure and revenue, just, just so you are aware of that.
Council, if you remember, we applied for that twice, and the second time we got that grant. And so we'll get that figured out, and it will be at the end of the month in that.
And remind me what that was, what's the intent of the...
So the intent of the, it's a Brownfield assessment grant, which will allow for property owners to do Phase 1, Phase 2 environmental studies on a property. It does include paying a consultant to help manage that grant, which was approved when we, when we applied for it. So some of the funds will go to, to that consultant. It also will help do some site-specific studies and planning. So if there's a specific site that needs to have a reuse plan made for it, we could use funds for that. And also for the city, that if we had a larger area that we might want to do a planning study, that we can create some direction, like the Fifth South Corridor, for example, that we could, could do a planning study and create a document for that growth. So it's a really exciting grant opportunity. And CCOG actually received a $1 million revolving loan fund from the EPA, which we can then coordinate with them and send people to them if they qualify for that.
That's great.
Things are good, yes.
Just, first of all, congratulations. I think that is wonderful. And my question is, you're talking about where to possibly house this. I was wondering what our science and environment's role might be in this, executing of this grant?
Yeah, Hannah is, is, is one of the people in our, in our committee group to help manage the fund. So it's a team effort with planning and engineering and environmental. And Christine is going to help with managing that grant as well. So it's, yeah.
And then are you closely working with CCOG on their part?
Yeah, I've talked with Dave Doran a little bit about what they have received, and we're going to coordinate our efforts so we can go in the same direction.
It's a great opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, see you. No more questions. Thank you for being with us. And with that, we are adjourned. We got you out in time, Roger.